I'll call this meeting of the city of Kingman Clean City Commission to order. And request the, a vo call.
Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
That's it.
Commissioner Russell.
I'm here.
Commissioner Ober.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
We go for 'em.
Thank you. If I stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America. To the republic which stands aloneation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder to the members of the commission when you're, when you're speaking, please turn on your microphones and have a close where we can hear and the people on that happen to be online can hear us. Thank you. All right, item one is the approval of minutes. Have everybody had a chance to review the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, and I see your problem with the, I make a motion that we accept.
All right.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I think that's all ayes for approve the minutes. Now, item two is consideration of public comments. The wish to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result, result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one at L. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing that, and that's on there twice. So, I'm reading it twice. All right, do we have any body who would like to speak to the commission? All right, they're all done. We will continue on. Item three is reports, and we have a presentation by the Dig It Kingman Community Garden. Andrea Penn, I believe?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, we have Andrea Penn here to give us a presentation on the Kingman, Kingman Community Garden.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I'll put my stuff there. Make it happen. All right, hello. Is this on? Yeah, I'm not very tall. There we go. So today I'm here to basically highlight a little bit of a treasure that we have in Kingman. It's the Dig It Kingman Community Garden, which is a nonprofit five oh one C three, and we've made a lot of progress since its inception in two thousand and fifteen. So in just six years, we've, you've kind of seen some of the pictures that I put there. We've made it quite the place now. Some of our objectives, well, our main objectives, I should say, are to facilitate food security and community involvement, to use sustainable growing techniques. So we pretty much try not to use any chemicals whatsoever. Obviously, there are those occasional boogers that we got to kind of kill, but most time we try to do it any other way. So we don't use any chemicals. Pretty much everything there is organic. We make our soil too, so it's pretty much organic. To conserve water, one of our biggest things, to provide a safe place to garden, to provide education on and off site with many partnerships, and of course staying local. So we try to get everybody involved here because it is a community garden. So how do we do that? With lots of volunteers, basically. We have sixty beds that we lease out at fifty dollars a pop. All of them are leased out, which is great for us. And with that, we definitely expect that they'll give us two hours a month to volunteer. So that also works. With that, we have other volunteers. So we have our leases, and then we have the LDS missionaries. They come in, the probationers. We get some probationers there, juvenile and adult. We have group homes that come in. We have the high school volunteers, usually from the academy, master gardeners, the Mojave Community College, and some veterans that like to come in and help out, which is therapeutic in some ways. So we get a lot done with all those people, which is great because we have a lot of weeding, especially when it rains. We all love rain, but man, does it get annoying. I did throw out some pictures there of just kind of what we do there, a lot of what I talk about. I just thought you should see kind of what it is. So there are pictures there. We receive many generous donations, some monetary, not as many as we love monetary, but we do get lots of other things, like the local landscapers. They drop off their mulch and leaves in the fall, which is nice. The alpaca farm keeps us up to date on manure. Mojave Community, the, the fairgrounds, they also chip in when they have horses. They, they come and give us some of their manure. Yes, we get excited about manure. No one else does. Star Nursery, they've donated some of their plants. And then if you ever wonder what Home Depot does with all those boxes of seeds at the end of the year, we get them all. So everything that they did not sell last year, we have them all in our storage unit right now to sort through, which is great for our leases because that is part of the package, is they get all the free seeds they want, they get water, and they can get a watering system. So Home Depot helps us tremendously with that. And then we also have lots of donated art, which is kind of nice. Or people want to fabricate something, they get there and they get motivated, and they're like, I need to make a praying mantis. And you're like, okay. And then it's huger. It's taller than I am now. So it's great. You never know what's going to motivate people there. So you never know what we're going to have, but I do have that picture out there. He's, he's a pretty big guy. So that's nice. In addition to all of that, we have two of the free, little free libraries. One is kids and one is an adults. I have a picture of the kids filling the kids one. We keep those stockpiled because it's heavily trafficked with the park right there and two preschools. They come in and out. We see people driving in, getting books, putting books back in, and it's great. I mean, it's a great resource, especially during the COVID time when the library was kind of iffy. That really pretty much filled in. We got all our donations when we started from the community. Since then, the UPS store made a very huge donation of all new Scholastic books. So we had boxes beyond boxes, and then the Young Marines chipped in with some more. So we are covered with books for now, which is great because we're still filling the libraries. We also, not to mention, we have the, the libraries. We run a children's garden, which is mainly my part and the, and the books, but we have our own fenced-in area. We have a playhouse. We have a sandbox. We have a kitchen, all donated, of course. And we also have our own composting unit, which was an old freezer that has been converted to a compost bin, which is where the kids say we grow our own worms. And we do. We have lots of bugs, lots of roly-polies, and you'll see the kids' heads what it looks like in a freezer, but it's a dirt box full of bugs. And I guess that's fun. I don't know. I like it. So. We offer free themed events every month, every month that include a story, activity, craft, and garden work. At the events, we generally have between twenty and forty kids. That's not counting the parents. This year's themes in January was winter in the garden, obviously. We took a tour. It was fun. The kids were just impressed. They were very like, just mesmerized that there was broccoli on the ground and how that came about. They were very mesmerized by that. Then we had helping others. So we had the police stop over. They read a book, you know, just showing some community support, which is always fun. Then we had the birds in the garden, which the Feathered Friends were supposed to stop by, but that day ended up being absolutely freezing. So the birds that were nice and tropical were like, no, we can't do this. So we regrouped and we talked about all the birds that we could see, and we talked about other birds. And then we also had an Easter egg hunt. So it worked out. Kids didn't mind the birds were there when you give them candy. Never does. Then when the next one was gardening, which was in April, we did a planting day, and we had so many people from the community come out and help plant. It seemed like we had a person for every kid, which was great. If you did look at the pictures, you saw our jungle back there. We planted everything. Anything we got, we planted, and they planted it not in the places I thought they were going to plant it where I had marked out. No, I still find things that I'm amazed that grew where they grew. So, but we have made a lot of produce from that, which has been nice. Then we had the creepy crawlers come in from BLM, and that was a very huge educational one because we had Gila monsters. We had every crazy poisonous snake there. And then we had some of our, I call friends of the garden, basically the fathers of the garden. They brought in their reptiles. So we got to handle some snakes. We got to see some lizards and things, and it was very hands-on. Even BLM brought a king snake that we could play with, and then we had some tortoises visit that time too. So it was very educational in that bit because we don't want the kids to necessarily approach any of these, but we do need them to know which ones are very scary. So we wanted to make sure that we hit on that pretty hard, especially in the garden, because we do have a resident king snake there. Him and I are on good terms normally, but he does sneak up on me quite a bit. He likes to be in the children's garden, which is awesome because he keeps all the rabbits and other rodents out of there, but he always finds me. I'm like, he needs a cat bell or something. I don't know. But anyway, we do have him. And yeah. So then we had, after that, we did recycle and repurpose, which Sarah was there, and we took all my recycling that I'd saved in the last month, and the kids were free to make any type of crazy art craft project they could come up with, and they did. Some of it I could understand, some of it I couldn't, but they were very excited about it. And that's when we also started our recycling with the aluminum cans. From there, we did bees, which we had a lot of people come in, the honey people, I like to call them. They gave them all free honey, so the kids love them. And we talked about how bees are good. We pollinate. We purposely plant things that are pollinate. We like bees in the garden, and we don't want the kids to be afraid of them. We want them to stay away sometimes, but we don't want them to be afraid of bees because we need them to stay around. And if you look at some of the pictures again, I can get real close to the bees. They love our flowers, and they don't care how close you are. The kids can almost touch them, and those bees are like, I don't care. I'm in heaven right now. You could do whatever you want. I'm eaten. And that's great. From there, we did ladybugs and butterflies, which we purchased our own, and that was fun, watching the caterpillars grow and the larvae from the ladybugs. And then we released them, and we have lots of butterflies in the garden right now. We just did fruits and veggies, which you were there to see, and we did a scavenger hunt of that where they had to find different things in the garden, and then they could taste different things. And pretty much all of it was grown in the garden, although the watermelon and tomatoes are always the biggest hit, which we all know why. So that was fun. Next month is pumpkins, of course, obvious. After that, we'll have healthy eating, which will have the health department come in. And then from there, we're going to do exercise in December because we're going to have to keep warm if we're going to do something there anyway. So we'll have one of my friends, it's a personal trainer, come in and get them all going. And we talk about how that's important in the garden, obviously. So the children's garden also started, like I said, the aluminum can program. We've been getting so many donations now, which is great. We just had the VFW drop off a giant trailer load of, I don't even know, not all cans, but lots of aluminum, different things. So good, we'll use it. Year to date, I haven't counted that in because I haven't got the numbers back from that one. We've made a hundred and seventy-five dollars of just people dropping off their, their cans from their house. Labor Day was a big deal. The parks over there, I think the, the people that had parties just kind of dropped them off, which we were fine with. So that's nice. We love free money, and it helps with the children's garden. The other thing that we get is Smiths. Smiths is so instrumental in, in my kids. The children's garden, we receive snack, juice, and water donation monthly from Smiths, anything I need, because of course we got to feed the kids. I mean, can't always give them vegetables because they don't always respond to that, but you give them juice and you give them a little bit of a fruit snack. We're their best. So, so we get those from Smiths every month, which is great. And then we also, Starbucks also helps us out with whatever we need. They caffeinate our worms. We get all of their coffee scraps, I should say, their grounds. So our worms are the most caffeinated. They also donate hot chocolate in the colder months. Dunkin' Donuts does the same. They'll give us donuts anytime. And then Little Caesar's, they gave us a whole bunch of pizza on planting day, which was great because everybody was tired and hot after that. So we're using a lot of different resources. And then the other activities that we do, like buying the, the caterpillars and larvae and whatever else we need, basically anyone from the community donates. I just throw it out on our Facebook page. I say, hey, look, you know, this is what I'm looking to do. Like this month, we're going to be making scarecrows. I need clothes. I need straw. And people are just dropping it off, which is what we need, you know? It's repurposing right there, you know? And it works because we'll make something out of it. Let's see. Oh, we're also in conjunction with Mojave Community College and offer different gardening classes through the college, which are held at the garden. We offer free tours to any community group. This year, we worked with many homeschool groups. The park, the, the park, the city park, Kingman City, they had a big summer camp for the kids, and they came in and I did a lesson, and they planted in a, in a cup and got to take it home, and very exciting. We worked with Searback Garden Club, and then of course many adult daycares. And we'll, we'll find something that reaches each one of them, so then they feel productive, which is great. They get a little bit of thing, whether that's seed sorting or, you know, picking the weed out of the ground. But we work with all levels, so it works, and it's great for them. They feel like they've done something during the day, and it helps us. So. All the food that is grown stays in the community. If we have access, it is going to Cornerstone, the Food Bank, or the Veteran Velas. The kids' garden, basically every month, I pick a whole bunch of stuff, and it looks like a cornucopia on the table, and it's just free picking to any of the kids that show up that month. And it's, it's fun. I mean, you never know what we're going to get that month. The kids try new things. They're like, ooh, this one looks cool. And their parents are like, I don't know what that is. And I'm like, oh, that's a squash. They're like, oh, okay, all right, yeah, you can have that. Yeah. How do we cook it? And I'm like, oh, yeah. So we try to train the parents as much as we can because they don't always know everything either. And then I, just yesterday, I guess, we had some kids take, take some of the produce to fair, which was great. They took pumpkins, watermelon, and zucchini, and they were excited. They got to wash them. They got to take a wagon because they couldn't carry it, and they, they put it all in the, in the fair. So we'll see how they do tomorrow. So basically, we try to reuse, repurpose anything to cut costs in the garden. And then, yeah. Oh, yeah, we just recently was notified that we're a finalist in the Organization of the Year for the Andy Devine, Andy Devine Awards. So we found that out yesterday. So that's nice. And then I guess just basically, you know, in future, what we want to do, and or next year or whatever, is we'd like to work with the city or county in some beautification projects. I especially would love to take the children out, especially in the children's garden kids, because it's their community. They would love to do some type of project, you know, planting something, doing something, whatever it is, but then they can walk by with whoever, their friends, their family, and say, look, I did this, you know? They're more apt to keep it clean. They're more apt not to graffiti. They're just all that, you know? They're, they're on it. So that, you know, that's something we would love to do. We'd like to build our numbers in the college classes. We'd like to possibly work with the health department, WIC program, to share veggies and teach them how to eat and prepare them, because we all know that they're not always the most educated on the WIC program, and if they could get fresh veggies and fruits from us, and we could just kind of sit down with them, you know, who knows what that would lead to? We would like to grow our children's education program with more community involvement, and we would like to bring back the Dig It Dash, the five K, as a fundraiser because we haven't had one in two years, other than my aluminum cans. Who knows? But yeah, that's kind of what we're doing there. Our upcoming event is October eighth. We'll be doing another children event about pumpkins. And then October twenty-second will be our pumpkin harvest of our fifty-six kids that planted that day. So I'm hoping to have at least fifty-six pumpkins. It's looking pretty good. So, so yeah, that's kind of what we're, we're doing. That should be a fun day. Yeah, if you have any questions, let me know. But that's kind of, we're doing, we're touching on a lot of bases out there right now. So we're hoping to keep going.
All right, Andrea. I, I know I was up here the other day, and boy, that thing has really changed since, in the last couple of years. So it's awesome now. So.
It's pretty green right now.
We appreciate your presentation, and I'd say that's, that's an awesome organization and, and garden up there for the community. So keep it up, and we'll try to make up there more often.
It's all volunteer. No one gets paid.
Yeah, awesome.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
I do as well.
Good.
You have to fight it out, yeah.
I just wanted to say, I think you're doing a great job, and I would like to see more community involvement as well. And could you state for the record, and those who are listening, where you're located and how they would go about like wanting to do a donation?
Well, we do have a website at Dig It Garden, Kingman. Dig It Kingman, Dig It Garden. I never know what it's called. It's one of those. To me, it's a community garden. We also have a Facebook page. It's, you know, that's where I keep updating with everything and pictures and events and everything. And Kingman Kings, King, Kingman Kids on Facebook will have absolutely everything on there. But as far as donations, our website, you could donate straight through our website. And then where we're located, I always say we're right next to the splash pad because every kid knows where that is. It's the Cecil Davis Park. We're on Lily. I don't know the exact address because we're just the garden right there, but we're right next to the park and the splash pad park, and it's great. I mean, we get a lot of people just walking over, and, and some days when I'm planting, I just take it over to the garden and just, you know, let anybody that's over there taste some tomatoes, and then I get them hooked. So, you know, and if you want a bed, obviously, you just call. We have all our flyers. We have everything on the garden itself. So if you're walking by, of course, it's on our website and Facebook. It's fifty dollars a year. I like to say unlimited water, but you get your, your seeds, you get, you know, water, you get a watering system, and you get a lot of help because we're always there. We're always willing to help. Anybody that's there is very knowledgeable. And I wasn't. I mean, I just started gardening last year. I was raised in Michigan, so you're pretty much guaranteed you know how to do it. But, you know, here is a bit different in the desert. So I've been learning a lot of things from my, from my fellow gardeners, and lots of master gardeners there, and they will just take you by the hand and literally take you by the hand and tell you how to do it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, my question. On your aluminum collection, do you take anything other than, than the aluminum cans, such as those aluminum pie plates that you get? Because I didn't know.
Anything that's actually aluminum, because some things appear to be aluminum, and they're not aluminum. But yeah, we take them to car recycling. They work with us really well.
Okay.
They come in and they do the education part for the kids as well. So we just kind of work with them, and they probably.
And do you have a, a regular dumpster that you have there?
We have the two bins. They're green. I've got some pictures out there. They say recycling. There's handprints all over them because that's where the kids decorated. And like I tell everybody, and I put in the paper too, is just bag them and throw them over the fence if we're not there, because I have a lot of kids that love to clean up.
Because I've been throwing my aluminum, you know, like pie plates or the turkey bit, roasting pans and stuff. I think they got a lot of something as aluminum in them. So normally, they don't take those, and.
No, I don't. Like I said, it has to be full aluminum. One thing that we have been getting is the low-cost spay place. They, they give us all their cat cans, all the cat food cans, which is nice. So we have an ongoing thing from them because they have lots of cats.
Good, because I've just been throwing that stuff away, been keeping aluminum cans, but, but throwing it away, and I don't get enough to make it worthwhile.
Yeah, and that's what happens.
Digging it down myself.
You know, you put it in a little grocery bag, and then you just toss it over the fence in our bin, and it, it all adds up for the kids. So that's all we're trying to do.
Rod, do you got anything?
Yeah, it was fun, the scavenger hunt.
Yeah, I, I was up there Saturday, and somebody came out, so I went in, and the wife was outside the gate, and then the gate closed, and I'm saying, how'd I get out of here? She had watched the people that came out.
There's a doorbell.
There's a button around the corner.
Yeah, you gotta tell them. You're so trappy in there. They don't see you. We get lost in the garden sometimes. They don't realize, everybody doesn't know how to get in and out. I didn't know when they put it in. I was, I came back from vacation, and I was like, I have no idea how to get out of here. I was like, do I climb the fence? And my kid's like, what's this? I was like, oh, perfect, great. They're smart.
On your, on your book collection, do you have any preferences of the type of books that you would like to get in your, your collection?
No. We put them out when we get them. We have, we have a lot right now. The ones that go the quickest are the, the kids. You know, the kids' ones go so quick. Those kids come in and they take them, and I don't know, you know, we get some in return, but it seems like those are the ones that go very quickly. But I know as a parent, I can read like three or four of them a day. So that's how it works. So.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.
We thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see you more out there. Hopefully, we'll see you more out there.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on along. We have item four, Old Business, and A is the event calendar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Today, we actually had our Adopt a Highway cleanup out on Route 66 from the Public Works Building down to the truck stop. And I didn't get a bag count today, but we'll have that information for you next month. But that's about all I had for the event calendar. I don't know if anybody had any new events to add.
I don't have anything that I know of. Anybody else?
Were we gonna do anything for the November festival as far as cleanup? I don't, we've never discussed it. In fact, I didn't even know we were gonna have a November festival until last month.
I don't know, but we can discuss it as a staff.
Okay.
All righty, anything else on that? If not, we'll go on to B, the community outreach and education.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd like to thank Andrea for that presentation tonight. That was a great presentation. We do have a couple in the pipeline. November, we'll have a presentation on the hazardous waste collection event. Is that right? October. October will be that presentation and the event will be in November. Also, in November, I talked to the police chief about a presentation. He had given the presentation to the council at their last meeting on some of the wildcat dumping issues that we have, people dumping things in alleys. So he had given a pretty good presentation on that and had worked with Eddie and Kealan on that presentation. So he's open to giving that presentation to us in November. I didn't, I wasn't able to confirm the date with him. He went on vacation. But I will get with him as he gets back and try to get that scheduled for November.
And we'll try and have Dave come with him?
Yeah, well, I'll talk to him. And I can also talk to the fire chief, see if we can roll the weed thing in with that, but I haven't had those discussions yet, but try to get that set up for November. And I don't know if the commissioners have contacted with anyone who would be interested in coming and doing a presentation for us in the future or.
I'm sorry, what was that, Rob?
I didn't know if any of the commissioners had talked to any organizations that were interested in coming in and giving a presentation for us.
Not yet, no.
Well, that'll take us through the end of the year, so. That's all I had on that.
All righty. Moving on to C, we got the community recognition program.
So Commissioner Oberg and Donna have been working on that together. So I was wondering if maybe the two of you could give a little presentation or a little discussion on.
Yeah, we'll just be real quick. Donna and I have been working together, coming up with verbiage and what, whether we should do a certificate, a plaque, a trophy. So I did a lot of running around the last couple of weeks, staples, H&amp;H printing, the trophy shop. Anyway, ended up at Lee's. They do a lot of my work for my business. And they just, they donated so much of their time and printing. And I have a proof for the first presentation we're gonna give. I'll just show you what it's gonna look like. Hopefully, she's not watching. She doesn't know she's getting it yet, but anyway, this is a proof. It's gonna be eight and a half by 11. This is silkscreen printed. It's actually a wet ink that they emboss into the metal. And then this piece of metal will actually go on a marble wood frame. Beautiful. It's gonna turn out really good. Anyway, cost-wise, so the commission, the plaque, the wooden plaque is normally $14.95. She's giving us that at half price for $7.95. And she's doing all this for free. And that's Lee's uniform down there, if anybody, yeah.
That's great.
Give them a little. Anyway, so we have that underway. I guess the logistics would be if anybody has someone that they want to nominate for the award, turn that form into Donna and then Donna and I'll get together. We've created like three different verbiages right now. One is for a general contractor, one is for a private residence, and the other one would be for businesses. So it's basically the same verbiage, but we changed the very last sentence to accommodate a business, a property management company, something, you know. So it's all set, ready to go. All we need is people, you know, nominate the people, get it over to Donna, and we'll get the plaques made up. And then from there, Rob and I and Donna will get together and we'll decide how we're gonna do it. We'd probably like to have Rob and maybe Mr. Fogg in there and we'll meet here at the chambers and we'll get some of the newspapers like we talked about last time and just do a quick little 15-minute presentation. We talked about maybe doing two at a time. I think once we get through the first five, I think that we have, it'll just be one every couple of months, I imagine, unless, you know. So maybe for the first time, we'll do one person and then a second time, we'll do two, all at the same time. Because it's gonna be hard to round those people. We'd like the fire chief to be here because he's in charge of construction. So if we're giving an award to a contractor, I think the chief should be here and Rob, maybe Mr. Fogg or the mayor and then. Anyway, so that's where we're at with that.
And I think scheduling will be the, we'll just have to work with people's schedules on how that actually happens, but we can do that.
Yeah, hopefully, that looks like it's gonna look good there for the plaques and stuff. They ought to be proud of that. Anything else on that subject? If not, we'll move on to D, service to the community program.
I have some notes to pass out, so. So, you know, we've been talking about the community service program. We're in pretty good shape. We've got, the waivers have been prepared by our risk manager. They've been approved by our insurance company and they've been approved by the city attorney. So kind of the next thing on our plate would be to, well, I'll just, we'll just go through this. So next steps would be to, we still need a name for the program. I did put Manager Fogg in on that topic, on that task today, so we'll see what he comes up with. Finalize the program scope, talk about that a little bit later. And once that's finalized, I think we need to reconfirm that with everybody so that, make sure they're under the same understanding that we are as far as what we will or won't be able to do. Publicize the program. We can visit, I think we all can visit service organizations, churches, let them know about the program so they can let us know about people who need help and also try to enlist them as volunteers for the program. Develop our website and Facebook infographics, develop our brochures, be able to distribute those at special events. Hopefully, we'll start being able to attend special events more regularly now. Develop our volunteer database. Set up our donate, set up the mechanism for us to be able to accept, you know, donations, you know, if people want to give like a monetary donation. Contact the local businesses regarding equipment and material donations. We would receive referrals from code enforcement, again, service organizations, churches, and the general public. We take, applications would be available on the website, Facebook page, or, you know, in our office or in the clerk's office. So once we got an application, we would, as a staff, we would review it, you know, go over there and talk to the folks and see what they needed done and figure out what, you know, what we can help with and what we might not be able to help with. See what equipment and supplies we would need, inventory for that operation, and collect that property owner waiver ahead of time when we got the application. So as far as the scope, and this is, this is open for input. So, you know, we'd have trash and weed removal, small repairs, you know, fencing, gates, those kind of things. Paint, you know, exterior painting. And then when we went to the site, we'd actually coordinate with the commissioners and volunteers about, you know, scheduling the cleanup event. We'd have our onsite safety and tailgate meetings, collect the volunteer waivers forms. And then the exclusions to the program, what I have so far is removal of inoperable vehicles and any major or structural home repairs. You know, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be doing any work that a licensed contractor should be doing. And I don't think we should be doing any interior work. I think that opens up more liability than what we've anticipated. So that's kind of what I've got right now, but like I say, I'm open for input on what kind of scope items, maybe I'm not thinking that we could do. And maybe some are things that we should specifically exclude from doing, so.
So if a individual homeowner, what have you, that somebody doesn't refer, they could do an application to see if we would be able to help them? Okay.
Well, just if you think anything over the next month or so, just let me know.
Looks like we did a good job of covering a lot, most everything that we could think of there, so. Yeah, that's awesome.
I mean, it's similar to what we used to do with the Rock and Roll Paint-a-thon, you know. We would, people would submit applications. We would pick a handful of them and go paint their houses and do small stuff outside for them, but, you know.
Have we got a goal or a maximum that, number of places that we could do in a month or we got a?
Well, I mean, I think in the beginning, I mean, I guess I was envisioning us doing one of these quarterly to see how it would go. So we plan on doing four of them a year. And then depending on the demand, if we get more demand and we've got enough volunteers, then maybe we could have, you know, one or two different work groups go out on a weekend and maybe do a couple of houses on a weekend or something, so. But I think one a quarter for the startup to see how it goes.
Yeah, sounds awesome.
Would there be any grant money available, anywheres for this sort of thing, for any kind of materials that we would have to buy? Or like, in the event that we did see inoperable vehicles that are just left someplace on private property, getting the tow trucks to pull them out and I don't know, you'd have to work with legalities on that with the DMV and titles and whatnot, but.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it gets pretty complicated.
It does, but I just wanted to.
I think.
Some of these things could start getting involved with a little bit of money as far as materials and paint, if nothing else, if we can't get it donated.
Well, I've been impressed with the commission's ability to obtain donations in the past, so I'm counting on you, so.
I know for the vehicle remover, we get a lot of abandoned vehicles out there in Golden Valley. So we, normally, we go through Erase and if they need to, they go through the sheriff and what have you. And then they'll go out and make sure it's not stolen or what have you, and then they can arrange to pick it up. So it's not a huge problem of getting it done. It takes a little bit of time sometimes to do it, but it can be done, but. All right, so. We can look at this for the next month and come up with any other ideas and suggestions on how, when we can do that and. What about the setting up the donation fund? Does that happen soon or?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm personally not familiar with that, but I know the Parks and Recreation Department does accept donations. So I think it's just a matter of setting that fund up with our finance department.
And keeping that separate from other.
Yeah, it would just have to be separate from all the other funds.
Okay, great. So we could just write a check to the Parks Department designated for the, whatever we call this program?
Well, yeah, I think we would set up a specific fund for this program, so, yeah.
All right, awesome. Have you got any other comments on that subject? All right, looks like we're making progress. My trailer's ready to go to work. All right, we'll go on to 4E, the commission vacancy update.
And this is just an update for the commission. The, our four candidates, that information was forwarded to the council and that will be heard at the council meeting Tuesday night. Donna has reached out to those four candidates and invited them to attend the meeting if they'd like to address the council. So that was just to let you know that hopefully, next meeting, we will have two new members.
Great, awesome.
That'd be great.
Rob?
Yes, ma'am.
So are all four still interested?
Yes. As far as, as far as, yeah. Oh, okay. One, we haven't had contact.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else on that subject, we'll go on to announcements by the commission and we'll start out with Ms. Teresa.
Not a lot going on except for trying to reach out to our original Adopt a Block participants that we, well, I received a list from Donna. Apparently, it's a different list that C has. But we've been reaching out to those to see if they're still interested in the program because we had talked about seeing if we were going to revitalize it. So far, we've had, I've had a couple no's primarily because of staffing issues or they're already involved with the United Way Day of Caring, so they're already doing cleanups with those. Everybody else seems very supportive and are willing to, like, start the program again. Because it was my understanding, all the permits had been expired, so I've had a lot of positive feedback with that. And I think it'd be a great project to get back out there to the community on. And that's all I've been kind of busy doing, so that's all I've got. Maybe we could put that on next agenda to get some kind of decision on that.
All right.
Thank you.
You, Teresa, how about C?
Just wanted to remind everybody, this coming Saturday, we're gonna have a Easy Up setup down on Beale Street. And we're gonna be answering questions for anyone who has questions and passing out some literature regarding the Adopt a Block program. And towards, anyone that wants to come down and sit out in the sun, you're more than welcome to come and join us. Kathy and I will be down there setting it up. anyone that wants to come down and, and sit out in the sun, you're more than welcome to come and join us, Kathy and I will be down there, uh, setting it up.
What, what time?
Uh, that'll, what time are we gonna set up Kathy?
Well, the actual children starts at three.
Three, yeah.
So, uh, two, three, three o'clock, something like that.
That sounds good.
In the front of, on Beale Street, uh, Beale Celebration.
We, we don't know if it's on actually Beale Street or if we'll be on 4th Street, we gotta find that out when we get there.
Alrighty.
That's it for me.
Alright, thank you C, Rob?
Nothing for me right now.
Alright Kathy?
Hey, I saw a Facebook, uh, that's one of the video thing. That was great. Went to dig it and, um, wanted to thank the staff or whatever for helping clean up this morning, great turnout, um, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you Kathy. I apologize for missing the cleanup this morning, cause I ended up having to take the wife in to get, she had to get holes lasered into her eyeballs and she didn't wanna go by herself, so I, I, I got dragged down there and she might've still been there if she went by herself, but. Anyway, and also, if you have an item that you wanna have put on the agenda and stuff, email Rob or, or, uh, Donna and if we need to, we can get together prior to the meeting and, and discuss it to get it put on the agenda and stuff. So don't be afraid to make suggestions for the thing, because we're, we're all members and we, we want everybody's input, uh, on the commission and, and your ideas to, to make things happen, so, uh, we'd appreciate any input that you care to give and we'll do our best to get it on there and, and see what happens. Other than that, uh, I don't have anything other than that, uh, Rob?
Oh, no sir.
Alright. Alright, I guess we'll need a motion for adjournment. Alright, Rob, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go home, thank you.